So at least like try to keep it.
Yeah. What is your favorite subject and why?
My favorite subject this year is because we need to learn about our tenth grade summer on first of line.
Oh, that sounds really interesting. Is there a teacher or staff member who has helped you a lot this month?
Um, these teachers have helped me a lot with my training and I feel like they're so nice.
That's actually, yeah, she is really nice. What advice would you give to other students who want to be student of law?
Honestly, just be good and be yourself. That's basically all you, all you.
Awesome. You know, good advice. Well, thank you, Eason, for sharing all your answers with us and congratulations on being named from the McGuffey Middle School November student of law.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good advice from Eason. Just be yourself.
Hey, Mr. Wise?
Uh huh.
All right. Next up, we have our high school student council representative. That is Maddie Mackin. Maddie, ninth grade, correct?
Yeah.
All right, Maddie.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madeline Mackin and I am a freshman here at McGuffey and I'm representing the student council. Some school updates. The middle school and high schools, the student council hosted a Veterans Day luncheon last Monday with great food, music, and speeches. Our life skills program hosted a Thanksgiving feast for faculty and staff last week to celebrate the approaching holidays. McGuffey High School has been named as one of America's best high schools by U.S. News and World Report for twenty twenty-five. The middle school and high school collaborated with Chrome Federal Credit Union and Washington Area Federal Credit Union for a financial reality fair last week. Students were taken through multiple scenarios that required them to budget and plan for their financial futures. The National Junior Honor Society and the National Honor Society each held introduction ceremonies last week. Sports updates. Winter sports kicked off their practice this past Friday. Congratulations to our high school cheerleaders for winning their division at UCA regional competition last week. Both boys soccer team and the girls volleyball team made the Wipio playoffs with the boys falling in the first round to Avonworth High School and the girls defeating Short Cheers Houston High School in the first round and losing to Hopewell in the Hopewell High School in the second round. Congratulations to Moshi Dell and Ben Payette participating in the state cross-country meet. McGuffey Boys Soccer had three all-section selections. Sam Stout, Jeremiah Butterfield, and Ben Payette was honorable mention. Sam Stout was named to the all-Wipio team. Girls Soccer had four all-section selections. Maddie Crow, Cora Thomas, Ella Wolf, and Hannah McDonald. Miranda Weaver was honorable mention. Cross Country had three all-conference selections. Maddie Lucas, Ben Payette, and Moshi Dell. Football had four conference honorable mentions. Grant Clayton, Wyatt Hildress, Aaron Supler, and Riley Salisbury. Volleyball had five athletes honored as all-section. Sarah Brownlee, Nicole Clogus, Miley Main, Mara Janovich, and Gracie McVeigh. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Well done. Actually, I want to keep with the theme. We started with honoring board members. In with us tonight, we have Ms. Lena Hanna. Lena, you've got a title here. Senior Manager, Member Training and Outreach Manager from the Pennsylvania Board, uh, School Board Association. Ms. Hanna is here tonight to recognize one of our board members for the number of years they have on the board. So with that, Ms. Hanna.
Thank you so much. Those are cut back the following of the students, right? I mean, and then hearing all the great stuff that is happening within the district. So thank you for allowing me to be here, um, to do that. Before I do, I would also like to echo, you know, uh, whatever that next chapter is for both you, uh, Mr. Kern and Mr. Vanetta. I look forward to hopefully maybe seeing that somewhere in public education that you're kind of continuing that work. But if it's not, I wish you both the best. Um, and thank you for your service to, to your board and to the work for even with the F S B A. So having said that, um, as mentioned, my name is Lena Hanna. I need to put my glasses on now here in a moment. Um, and it is my honor to join you tonight on behalf of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Serving on a school board is a demanding responsibility. It requires countless hours of preparation, thoughtful decision-making, and a steadfast commitment to students, staff, and the community. I commend all of you for your dedication to the McGuffey Area School District. The P S B A Honorable Program acknowledges school board directors for their sustained commitment through years of service, beginning at five years and continuing at five-year intervals. The recognition ref- excuse me, the recognition reflects the dedication required to fulfill one of the most challenging roles in public education. Tonight, we honor Kenneth Leisure, who has served on his board for twenty years. So on behalf of P S B A, I thank you, Mr. Leisure, for your service and commitment to the McGuffey Area School District as well as all the rest of you. Um, and to any administrator, family members, staff, um, students, right? It takes all of you to do the great work that happens here. So thank you for all of that as well. Mr. Leisure.
Thank you, Ms. Hanna. All right. Uh, next item. Um, as, as many of you know, uh, this past spring, we completed the comprehensive plan for the McGuffey School Strips, otherwise known as F R C P, the Future Ready Comprehensive Plan. Uh, within that plan, we've identified four priority challenges that we've created goals around to address over the next three years. So that's this year, twenty twenty-five through the twenty twenty-eight school year. Um, through the rest of this year and during, uh, regular board meetings, we're going to be presenting on each of the four priority challenges to share with the community, share with the board, uh, not only, again, the, the challenge itself, uh, but the ways in which we're going to address those challenges. So tonight, uh, the first priority challenge from the F R C T is attendance. And with us to present is Ms. Kelly Painter. Kelly is our Attendance Officer and Transition Coordinator and Dr. Dan Gottren, our Director of Curriculum Instruction. So Kelly and Dan, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good to, good to see you all. Um, yeah, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about one of my, my favorite topics, sincerely one of my favorite topics, which is school attendance. And so we'll go on to the first slide here. Um, so as Dr. Oberkirk started to, um, speak to, um, we are now on to our second three-year future-ready plan since I've kind of been in this role, which is, um, that's kind of weird to think about, that we already finished a three-year plan and are on to now this is year one of the second three-year plan since, since they've done comprehensive planning in this fashion. And so, um, everyone who's been following along, you'll notice that three of those four priority challenge areas, um, are carryovers from the first plan. We felt as if those still are some of the, the most urgent issues, um, kind of pressing our district. Um, and that would be attendance, vision and culture of high expectations, and staff recruitment and staff retention. Um, in that fourth box, you'll notice in the previous plan, it was, um, partnership and connection with business and local community. Um, and I want to stress, that's still very much a, an area of importance for our district. Um, but the way that the plan itself works is you, you have to identify no more than four priority challenges. And with, um, with the recent developments with artificial intelligence, we felt as if we needed to give that one of the four formal seats, so to speak, in the, in the plan. But today, of course, we're talking just about, um, the priority challenge area of attendance. Awesome. Um, couple definitions, right? My, my daughter has a spelling test tomorrow, so we'll do some vocabulary, just like I did with her earlier today. Um, so when we talk about regular attendance, um, there's a couple ways you can slice that. Really, there's, there's lots of ways, but for, for our purposes, um, chronic absenteeism is what is counted in terms of whether or not a student is in what's regular attendance. Um, chronic absenteeism is anyone who misses, um, more than eighteen school days in a hundred eighty-day year. So ten percent, more than ten percent of the school year absent, you're considered chronically absent. And that encompasses all absence types. So if it's a parent excuse, if it's a doctor's excuse, if it's a legal appointment, um, if it's any absence reason, will count as excused. But it still counts towards those eighteen absences, um, on the clock for, for chronic absenteeism. Um, separate from that, and I guess I should clarify, certain times when a student's not in school do not count for the eighteen days. Like if it's a school, a school-sponsored field trip or extracurricular event, those are considered school attendance. Even, you know, if they are in Pittsburgh at the Science Center or something like that, that is considered in-school attendance. Um, and same thing if they're on a, a school-sanctioned athletic trip or a F F, an F F A trip, something like that. Um, but any other absence type, um, is considered, uh, you know, an absence for chronic absenteeism. Yes, Miss Ash.
Does that include, like, if a student is out for a long period of time due to a medical?
Yes. So great question. So if they have an extended medical absence, um, it's going to depend on whether or not they are officially approved for homebound. So if they're on homebound instruction formally, that is considered their educational setting and it would not count for these purposes. But if it's just that, you know, a flu or extended illness for, say, eight or ten days, that would count towards their absences. Yep. Yep, of course. Um, and so the second definition we have there is truancy. And that is dealing specifically with unexcused absences. Um, and, and then once a child reaches their third or more unexcused absence, they then enter formal truancy proceedings. And there's a, a number of steps that, that happen there. A lot of them are in Mrs. Painter's willhouse. Um, but I just wanted to make the distinction that, um, chronic absenteeism and truancy are, are different in certain ways. You could be truant and chronically absent, but you can also be one or the other, um, in terms of how absenteeism works. Um, and then also, um, you know, as, as if attendance isn't already complicated enough, um, you also have into that equation, you have students who may arrive late to school, you have students who are dismissed early from school. Um, but for our purposes of just strictly attendance, we're, we're talking about present or absent. Um, and then within the stu- the student handbook for each program level are particular procedures for what, you know, uh, tardy arrival, early dismissal. So those are, are certainly important topics. But what we're talking about tonight would be specifically school day absences of, of a full day. So we'll, um, yes, Miss Ash.
One more question. So we're reviewing vocabulary.
Yes, of course.
Maybe just for everybody who's listening or, or here, um, what are the definitions of the positive truancy of an excused absence versus an unexcused absence?
Yes. Good, good question. So, um, there are several different excused absence types. Um, you can have a parent excused absence, which is a parent note of, of really any reason, right? Like you can write kind of what the reason was, but, um, a parent can excuse up to ten days in any school year just because they're the parent and then they have that prerogative, right? So they might write their child was sick. They might write, we were out of town on Friday. Um, what they write is, you know, is kind of secondary to the number of dates they get. A parent can excuse ten times in a school year. Um, then the second most common excused absence type would be any kind of doctor's note. So dentist appointment, medical appointment, um, sick visit, well visit. Um, those excuses would come to the school and they are a separate classification that's not part of the ten parent excuses. Um, and there is not a limit to medically approved absences. So if somebody was to have a significant illness where they're hospitalized or they're not hospitalized, but they're home and like a doctor says, like, you cannot be at school for five days. Um, as long as you've seen a, you know, a, a doctor and gotten that verification from a, a medical personnel, then that is not part of your ten parent notes. Um, and there are other, um, few other ones, right? Like if there's a legal appointment and you have a note from the court system, that's going to be its own, own excuse category. Um, students can also apply for an educational trip. We currently allow for those. Um, and there's a few other exemptions for elementary students. There is, um, agricultural fair participation can be submitted with like a verification from the local four-H, um, organization. Um, students in grade eight and above, that doesn't apply as much because most of the, the agricultural things they're doing are through R F F A. So it's kind of covered, but, um, so that's, that's the majority of absence excuse reasons. That, you know, there's, there's, uh, you know, any number of other, uh, limited things that, that could apply, but that's the most common.
With an unexcused absence, I love you, though.
Yeah. So unexcused absence by definition would be, um, if they don't turn in any kind of note or verification of absence um, or if the parent turns in a note, but they've exceeded their ten notes for the year. Then we'll still note that, you know, we'll still take that note. We still appreciate the communication. But, you know, Pennsylvania attendance law states that if they've turned in more than ten of those, it becomes unexcused. So that would be the, unexcused is, is a little more straightforward. It's either no note of, of any type or a parent note in excess of the ten days. So, yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Miss Frye.
With regards to the excuse, and I think honestly, this is kind of for myself, too.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I had remembered reading at one point, but it could have changed.
Mm-hmm.
If a parent sends in a note, let's say students out for three days, parent sends in a note for those three days, is that one excuse? Or is that three excuses?
Great question. So it'd be by absence date. So that would, a note for three days would be three of the ten parents. Yep.
Thank you.
Hmm, of course. All right. Ms. Painter, on to, cool. So these next couple are just kind of stat slides to, to hammer home, um, the, the just concrete numbers that we're talking about. Um, in a hundred eighty-day school year, ninety percent attendance is eighteen absences. So as soon as a kid misses that nineteenth day, they then move into the camp of chronically absent. Again, doesn't mean they're truant. It doesn't mean, you know, that they are doomed for the year. It just means from a, a reporting purpose, that student has now moved to our list of students considered chronically absent for that year. Um, and, um, another note to make, that's like a per-student statistics. So a lot of schools, they'll, they'll report their average daily attendance, which is, you know, in a typical day, ninety-four percent of kids in our building are present. Um, that is a different statistic than when we talk about chronic absenteeism. We're talking about the number of children in each building who have missed more than eighteen days. So our, our average daily attendance is probably going to be higher than our regular attendance percentage because we're not, you know, usually the majority of kids are in the building each day. But over a hundred eighty days, any kid that misses more than eighteen times, they, they are now statistically considered chronically absent. And, um, just a, a little graphic, I've shared this before, but I think it's worth sharing again. Um, if a child averages fourteen absences a year from kindergarten to graduation, um, if they're at fourteen a year, which is still considered regular attendance, right? They're not chronically absent, they would have missed a full school year of cumulative school days by graduation. Um, if they aren't exactly ninety percent, if they miss exactly that eighteen every year, um, you can see it's, you know, it's a little more than a school year, right? Two hundred thirty-four. And then if they miss twenty days per average year, all the way up to two hundred sixty. And, you know, you can do the math from there. It, it goes up. But the most telling one is, you know, if you miss fourteen or more days every school year, you have, you will graduate with one last year of schooling, technically, right? So it's kind of, kind of just a, a numbers kind of thing, but it's, it's also sinks, sinks it in for me. Like attendance really does build on itself, right? So, all right. Um, so with the future-ready plan and because we, um, again, identified attendance as a major focus area, um, we then had to set kind of interim and a year-three cumulative goal for what we wanted to see happen with student attendance. And so, um, one of the tricky things is, um, state attendance reporting is on a full-year lag, which means that just recently, we got the final numbers according to Pennsylvania from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And about this time next year, we'll get the twenty-four, twenty-five final numbers. So that's why you see that the target for each school year is a, you know, this year's, um, target number is last year's attendance, which poses all kind of interesting challenges and scenarios. And so we'll talk about, a little bit later, about how we came to those targets and why, you know, we'll be each year reevaluating those targets based on the, the current attendance data that we do receive. Um, but that's just certainly important to note that, um, attendance reporting is on a full-year lag for when you receive that information from the state. And we've, we've tried to kind of do ways locally to get projections and, and get close. Um, but because there are so many layers, like it's, you know, students who are enrolled for ninety or more days and total number of absences. Um, it's, you know, the, our projections give us an idea, but we always are waiting on that final state number. But, um, heard enough for me for, for the moment. And so Mrs. Painter plays a big part in this. She's certainly not the only part, but she is a dedicated person and she's, you know, been in this role a couple of years. And so she's going to share a little bit about her piece of the attendance pie in terms of what she's doing to help us improve our overall student attendance. So, Ms. Painter?
Hi, everybody. Hello.
Good evening.
So some of my roles are, I support positive attendance via building an individual incentive. I work very closely with principals, the counselors, Dr. Gottren, to make positive experiences out of attendance and to give incentives to those who are having trouble coming to school. When I took over the job about three years ago, I wanted to be more positive about attendance because as you can imagine, it's a very negative space because I'm sending letters and going to the magistrate and things like that. So I wanted to start with some positive things, which we'll talk about more in a minute. Um, I do make contact with parents and guardians. I mail letters. I do emails, phone calls, have virtual meetings. Um, we work closely with Blueprint's truancy program and we do refer students to the magistrate when it comes time to do that.
Okay, sorry.
So some of those positive attendance incentives have been for perfect attendance and I started slowly. Um, we have talked with all the principals, uh, over the years about what we can do. And I started with doing a, a king or queen or superhero for a day at the elementary. So I would collect all the perfect attendance at the elementary school for the nine weeks and I would pick a random name and go to their classroom, visit them, and they could wear a cape and like a little, uh, eye mask if they wanted to be a superhero for a day or a king or a queen for a day. And we would celebrate them all day long at the elementary for having perfect attendance. The next year, I widened it a little bit further and I picked, um, one person from each grade at the elementary and they got an award for perfect attendance. And this year, the principals are working very closely with me so we can do a more building-wide incentive for perfect attendance. And, um, Ms. Augustine did a risin' dine where we got Krispy Kreme to donate doughnuts and we got, um, Mama Cheese to donate pizzas. You're, you're kind of falling behind.
I'm listening. I'm locked in on your presentation. I'm locked in on these slides.
Um, at the high school, we had a free period during period thirteen. We had snacks. I beat two groups of high school boys at the game of pig. Um, I promised them next time I'll beat them wearing a dress and heels because I know I can. Maddie Clayfield and the middle school were currently working to develop an incentive for this semester one attendance recognition.
All right. So, um, last, last couple, uh, couple of pieces that I wanted to share. Um, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Painter, and she, she truly has been a huge support for student attendance. Um, is, you know, in there every day, kids are stopping in, teachers are stopping in to see Gus as well. So, you know, Gus has been a, a big part of it. I thought maybe he'd come present with us, but I think.
I, I kind of need him in my center.
Yeah. Um, but no, she really has, has, you know, thrown herself into that role and, and, um, you know, put a lot of time and thought into helping us improve our student attendance. Um, so the last two things I want to, to leave everyone with is, um, so Pennsylvania breaks everything down into that, you know, blue zone, green zone, red zone, um, in terms of targets for the statewide, you know, uh, federal, this is, this is the percentage of students we want to see in regular attendance. And so the statewide target to exceed, if you're at ninety-four point one percent regular attendance or higher, then you're considered exceeding the state performance standard for regular attendance. If you are between eighty point nine and exactly ninety-four percent, that is meeting the performance standard, but you're not exceeding because ninety-four point one is like the, the top target, right? Um, if you are below eighty point nine percent, you are considered below the performance standard. Um, and I put the last one there so that you can see, the Pennsylvania statewide average, you know, across all schools is below the performance standard. So attendance is not uniquely a McGuffey challenge. Um, it is certainly our challenge as well. But, um, I think it's important for us to just kind of all. I think it's important for us to just kind of all be of the same understanding of, these are the targets, right? The ultimate goal would be for us to see more than 94% of our kids across the district in regular attendance. So, this last one is a little bit of a snapshot of how we've done, where we've been in the past, and I will, I just realized, as we're presenting, I have some, I'll have some printed copies I'll go and get and bring back to you guys, so that you can have all of this in print, I meant to have that before this, but I will, I'll bring those down to you as soon as we finish up.
I actually have it for their email tomorrow.
Oh, perfect. Then there you go, it'll come to you in your email, and you'll be all set. But I took us back to 1819, and I did put the note there that that year that we, you know, all remember shutting down, they froze the attendance on that date. So I always said that those numbers were a little bit higher, because we had two last months for kids to miss school. So there would have been, inevitably been a handful of kids that would have moved to chronically absent had we stayed through the end of the year. And so you can see through each year, we did decrease for a couple of years there, that was a stretch where lots of things were kind of going off the rails, and kids were being quarantined for 10 or 15 days at a pop, and that's, you know, when 18 is the magic number, you get quarantined for two weeks, you're kind of, you know, behind the eight ball at that point, especially if you get quarantined twice, right? So we're, we're glad to be past those, those years. And so what I have in the gray there, because I, I thought the question might rise, how did we establish those goals for the three years? And so at the end of the 2324 year, we tried to come up with projected regular attendance numbers, so that we didn't have to wait a full year delay, and we looked at the enrollment on the last day of school, we tried to calculate how many kids had missed more than 18 days. We did not look at whether they'd been enrolled 90 days or not, so I knew that our targets potentially would be a little bit lower than the actual state number, but I, I thought it was better to cast a wide net, instead of being overly optimistic of what we thought our numbers would be. We just recently did get the actual PDE data for 2324, and it was a good bit more positive than we were expecting, and a good bit more positive than when we were trying to set, guesstimate those targets. So what we'll do this spring is we'll go in and we'll reevaluate those three-year targets and increase those. But I do want to, I want to give a couple, couple things. First of all, like, we are proud, right, that our attendance data is, is reflective of, you know, some positive growth, but a few notes I want to kind of make with that. One is, when we have data that is challenging to us, right, that's below where we want it to be, I try to always encourage everyone, let's not get too low, right, like, let's figure out why, why is the data what it is, and, and let's figure out a way to build from it, right? And I want to practice the same when the data is, is more positive, that I don't want us to be like, and look how great we are, our numbers are up, because it changes every year. Exactly, like, we're done, it changes every year, especially because 2425 is already locked, right? Like, that school year has already ended, we won't know for, you know, 11 months how we did, but, you know, we want to be aware that there's, you know, it's different kids each year to a certain extent, kids have different situations, different medical things come up, so I, I don't, you know, I'd love for it to just stay, you know, at those numbers or even higher, but we also, you know, our main focus isn't what's the number, our main focus is, okay, what have we been doing that's helped the numbers move in a positive direction? How do we try to sustain that? And then if we do see, you know, any kind of a dip in, in the next school year, we try to, you know, evaluate and adjust and say, okay, what got us here, how do we, you know, we came down a little bit, why did we come down, what was, what things might have happened, what did we change? And just every year, using that data, good or bad, to try to chart our next course forward. But I, I think it's important, you know, for, for our purposes, to just always be talking about how we're doing, what those numbers are, and so, yeah, that's, that is where we are as of the end of 2324, and we'll see where, you know, where we go over the rest of this future ready plan, but appreciate your time. And Mrs. Painter, is there anything I left out that you wanted to share? Okay, awesome. Yes, Ms. Jackson?
I was gonna make sure I read this correctly. So 2223, let's say, high school, it was 68.3.
Yeah.
When the final numbers came in, that's that last column for 2324, we're up at 82.4. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, so PDE has a, that, all of the columns to the left of the gray were the official state numbers, and same thing with that column.
That's the last one.
Yeah, so they have us up significantly, especially in the high school, other buildings are, you know, also up a good amount in their numbers. So, yeah, we-
Considering you're talking about percentage points, it's a lot.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, yeah, we, you know, it is, when you look from 2223 to 2324, a significant take up order, but again, with caution, right? Because we want to, we don't want to, you know, be too high when we're up, and we don't want to be too low when we're down, but yes, you're correct.
So then that brings me to my next question, the same question I ask every time we talk about attendance, so you probably know what it is.
Okay.
And that is the McCyber-
Yes.
Attendance. It's calculated into part of, into this?
They are part of this formula as well, yep.
Okay. And how much of a difference does that make? Like, do they have a significant attendance problem that is part of the overall?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question, so it's, and it's an interesting answer, in my opinion, not all, but some of our kids in McCyber are there in part because they had some attendance challenges when they were in the building, and, and that's part of what they have seen as a, you know, a change, or, you know, if it's, there's been situations where maybe a parent says, I'm not sure what to do to get them to school, can we try this? And so in some cases, children that are in the building with attendance challenges will go into McCyber, and they will have improved attendance. And the way, if anyone is not familiar, the attendance for McCyber, they submit a, an attendance Google form that states, you know, I am present today. It's, you know, the ver, the online equivalent of taking role, and so if they submit that form, I am present today, they're present, if they submit, they can actually submit that they're absent, and then that would be an excused absence, and if they just don't submit the form at all, they're unexcused. So we've, we've seen some children change to that, you know, educational setting, and have improved attendance. We've also seen some children that have had attendance struggles even in cyber with doing that digital form. So I, I would say it's, there's no like, straight line of like, you know, they do worse with attendance, but I would say that a number of our cyber students went there partly because of attendance challenges in the building.
So then when we're looking at these goals of ways to increase our attendance overall for the district, we have, I know the Walker Middle School, High School, but I don't see McCyber. So are we not?
So they, so for, for this data, they are being included in whichever building they would, whichever building they would attend if they were in person. So they are, they are part of this data, but to your point, there's not a, we don't have a McCyber-specific statistic, mostly because for, from a Pennsylvania PDE standpoint, there is not like a separate school building for McCyber. We, you know, they would be considered still a middle school student or a high school student.
So then when you're looking at making these goals for each particular building to increase, are we also setting goals for McCyber?
Uh, we have not specifically, like, we haven't said, increase McCyber attendance, you know, to this percent regular attendance.
Are we looking at increasing it at all? Like, maybe not by a certain amount, but like, different things to be done to increase attendance in general in McCyber?
Um, maybe not as one of these goals. I will say, we, we definitely work with the McCyber students if they are in the truancy pipeline, Mrs. Painter does work with them. I've started sharing with the principals, all of the principals and counselors have mentor access for kids associated with their building that are in McCyber, so we have an effort, I've, I've tried to make this year an effort to be more intentional with the cyber students of sending regular email updates to the families, of sharing with the principals and counselors how they're doing. Now, more of that has been how they're doing in their classes than necessarily if they're attending or not, but I, I do think that's something we could probably talk about as a team of like, hey, McCyber specifically, how many of them are chronically absent, how many absences? And what I do, like, throughout the year, like, at the semester mark, I'll do a report of kids on track to be chronically absent at the halfway point in each building, and so what, I think I could definitely add to kind of your point about cyber, is I could look at all McCyber kids, how many absences they have through the first semester, I think that's probably a good, a good idea that I hadn't necessarily had in mind to do when I do that semester report, but I, I will do that now that I'm kind of talking through it, it makes sense, because they are, in a lot of ways, they are their own building, even though they're in these buildings, they, you know, they are their own school, sort of.
Because the attendance issue is different in that setting, in the school building, is the only reason. And then my final question is just, something, something I forgot.
Well, I did want to add that whenever I contact those parents who are in cyber absent, they use a lot of Dan's data for the classes, so that we can back up, okay, they're not signing in, but they're also not doing their work, or-
Right.
Yeah, they're doing the work, but they're forgetting to sign in, so we try and, you know, figure out those problems there and get those solved.
Yeah, and then there is notification for the parent if the student doesn't sign in.
It's the same exact, yeah.
Because I'm thinking, I had a parent who contacted me once about that very thing, that they suddenly got a letter, I feel like, I never even knew my child was supposed to be-
Yeah, it's in power school, so if they're in a power school, they get an alert.
Okay, all right. And then that was my question, my next question was, same numbers applied, so still 10 days, 18, like, there's all the same-
Yep, all the same criteria, and the other thing that we do send out to every kid when they enroll in McCyber, they get like a, an introduction email that lists out, you know, how to log in, expectations for the class, and in that welcome email is a paragraph that talks about how to do the attendance form, that if they don't fill it out, they'll be considered absent for the day, and Mrs. Painter has always tagged on those as well, so that she is aware of which kids are moving into McCyber. So, yeah, they, they, same rules apply with the 10, and then the 18 would be the, the max number before they're chronically absent, yep.
Thank you. For any more questions?
Yeah, Ms. Frye, yeah.
Yes, I have one more clarifying question, I think it's more for Ms. Painter.
Okay, go for it.
But it's regarding what you just stated, how the notifications to parents are the same as if the kids were in school, and then you mentioned-
Through power school.
Power school. So they don't get the one call?
They don't get the phone call, because they have until 3 o'clock to sign in. So that one call comes from first period attendance, so if you are a brick and mortar student, and you're not in first period, you're considered absent for the day, and that's when the call goes out, and the call is to notify parents that they're not in our care.
Right.
But the cyber students have until 3 o'clock to sign in-
Okay.
So it's put in the next day, but you would get an alert on your phone, like, any time a student's marked absent or a grade comes in-
Right.
That would come in on your phone that way.
Is there a way to set up a one call at a later time, just for the student? I don't know how that would work.
I'm not sure either, I think that would be a Mr. Wilson question.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, definitely we could, it'd be a little more manual process, but that's something we could do, certainly.
I was just thinking from a- Would it help? I mean, I'm thinking, it's something that could help bring awareness to the parents.
Well, and typically, it's in brick and mortar schools, school buildings, they'll do a morning attendance, and then they'll do an afternoon attendance, right? Because I know when I taught, I would get from the office, this is the morning attendance, and then in the afternoon, this is the afternoon, and it was important, because if you have a child who wasn't here in the morning, but they came in late because they were at the doctor's appointment, that's classified differently, and that would be on the afternoon attendance. So kind of that same idea, that you would get maybe an earlier and then a later update.
It's just, it's interesting, because as we're talking about attendance from, from a brick and mortar perspective, we're talking about butts in the seat, whereas cyber, we're looking actually at work produced, meaning they have to self-report themselves, so it is a little different that way, but certainly that's one of the ways we could look at it.
But then it's a process, right? Because they still have to submit that they're attending, that they're here, and then they have to do, submit their work, correct?
Right.
But, but work, yeah, I didn't want to, money was, but attendance is not work produced in a cyber system, more than-
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, guys, I appreciate it, and I want to say something too, about both of these guys. And it's, and it's apparent in the way they approach their presentations, and when you talk to them, both Kelly and Dan are proactive, but also positive. They've brought a positive, we use the word vibe to this, but you have, Kelly, and Dan has been right, right along with you, and that has made a difference, is that this is very tough work, and oftentimes, you are the one who has to make that call, that it's not a positive, but you've done things in a proactive and positive way, so I just want to thank you for that, and I think that's also reflective up here, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much so.
Thanks, everybody. Um, next on the agenda, no, I got it. Yep, all right. Gotcha. On the agenda, we have a motion to replace a 20-plus-year-old boulder, bowler, boiler, boiler in Joe Walker Elementary with the new high-efficiency boiler. Here to provide some details for this request is Mr. Peg McKee, our supervisor of buildings and grounds.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Yep, this is the last 20-plus-year-old boiler we have in the district. If we replace this one, then the oldest boilers we'll have will be six years old. As I tried to explain in my background, Joe Walker's not going anywhere. When you look, the township, you know, spent a lot of time and money getting ready for sewage, we have some private investment going on down there with some housing and so on. A few years ago, I got together with the architect, we sketched up a few things, like, how would we take care of that 100-year-old part of the building, make some changes to there, how would we change around, how we get in and out of that property and so on. So, you know, from a facility standpoint of view, personally, I don't see that building not having students in it for at least the next 15 years. You know, for the 21,000, now we replaced the one that failed last year, it's, you know, we started it up at the beginning of this heating season. Right now, just a little mansplaining thing right now, that high-efficiency boiler is just running at one efficiency, because the old one can only run at one efficiency. So we replaced this old one with another one just like the first one, then we can start with the high efficiency, we'll get some savings out of it. Realistically, would it pay for itself? No, I don't think so, but the, you know, the reliability to it is, is much better. We will certainly save money on it, the building will be more comfortable, because we're not heating water to 180 degrees when it's 55 outside, and you only need a tiny bit of heat, and to which is, you know, where we are with the old ones. The new ones, they adjust themselves based on outside temperature and, and so on, so. And then when we put the, we had the first one put in ADM, our, our longtime energy partner, did the install on the first one, so we had them put in valves and so on, getting ready for this one. And they know how, I'll call myself frugal, but maintenance crew, we can put this second one in ourselves, obviously, as I put in the background, we still have to have it inspected by labor and industry, not an issue, but should be a pretty quick switch out, once we get it, and so on. So that's the plan, is, is to just try and keep, you know, updating and, and get our, you know, core items of our facilities, you know, so they're here for the long term. So the next thing that, you know, we have to worry about is, hey, how are we going to renovate? Right? So we're not so worried about just keeping things running and keeping things warm, so.
Is it in the budget?
It is in my budget. So right now, we're asking for it to come, to, to get the authorization to pull the money from capital improvements, and I think we have what, around 120 in there, or somewhere around there. We'll see, we've been pretty good with, with the budget in buildings and grounds.
You guys are very good.
Yeah, so if I don't have to grab it out of there, I'm not going to, but, you know, that'll be an end of the year, end of the year decision, kind of thing, but we thought, okay, let's earmark it out of that fund for now, and then, you know, if we have to pull money out of there, you know, we can, but, you know, my goal is to always stay away from that fund, that's kind of, it's not as big as I would like it to be, you know, I'm going to credit console for that, you know, they've started a real reduction in some of our real revenue. So I like to keep that more for rainy day fund, and, you know, frankly, $21,000, it's not chump change, but it's not $200,000 either, so, you know, we try, just try and get that out of our operating budget where we can. Any, any questions from anybody? Oh, good. All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right, the other thing that I guess we'll, we'll pass replies to is after an impasse of a- Alright, the other thing that I guess we'll, we'll pass the applause to is after an impasse of a hundred and thirty-five days, so since June thirtieth, the state has finally passed, um, a budget. Here tonight to discuss the ramifications of those hundred and thirty-five days and to the degree that we can share with you at this point, what that means for McGuffey moving forward, uh, is, Ms. Obertchak, sure?
Thank you. And Mr. Brochman is going to help me. Like Dr. Oberk said, we do have a budget.
There it is.
Alright, there we go.
Thank you.
You can click this one.
Maybe, maybe it won't be as interesting.
Alright, as Dr. Oberk mentioned, the PEA state budget has been approved and signed by the governor, about a hundred and thirty-five days late, but it is done. For McGuffey, our basic education funding did increase slightly under twenty thousand dollars, so that's positive. However, our special education funding actually decreased about eleven thousand dollars. Um, and that has to do with the formula and our average daily membership, ADMs, you'll hear that term, uh, decreasing from the last year. Our Ready to Learn Block Grant actually increased fifty thousand dollars. That block grant is used to pay salaries and benefits for our kindergarten teachers. When it was first implemented, it was a classroom reduction project, so that pays for those kindergarten teachers. Our career and tech ed funding actually increased about seventy-three hundred dollars as well. So overall, McGuffey will see a net gain for twenty-five, twenty-six of about sixty-six thousand dollars in revenue. Dr. Brochman? There was also some cyber charter reform. This was a big part of the Pennsylvania bill. A lot of school districts would like to have seen the flat eight thousand dollars, uh, per child tuition cost. That did not happen, but they did revamp the formula slightly. Um, PDE requires the schools to report on this form. It's called a Form 363. Some of our expenditures, and what they're trying to do is look at our average daily, daily membership and how much we're spending, what our budget expenditures are for the school year to, to determine what we're paying per child to educate our children. That then translates to how much we're paying for a cyber student. It's one cost for basic education and more than double that cost for special education. In the new bill that passed, there's still going to be a formula, so every school district is still going to pay a different amount for cyber charter. However, they are allowing us now to deduct some of these expenses that we are paying from that calculation, so it should reduce the amount of per-student tuition we're paying. What we are early on estimating, because I won't know for sure until I see the actual formula in the form, um, we are anticipating a savings of about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars under this new formula.
Just McGuffey or that's Pennsylvania?
Just McGuffey. And that's for this twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
And considering that, that normally runs us approximately a million dollars, that's.
Oh, last year was one point seven. So, not a lot of savings, but every little bit helps, right?
And I will say, I say this all the time, but I'll say it again, um, the reason for that is because cyber school and cyber school parents are very vocal with their representatives. Um, and we need our schools and our parents to be more vocal with our representatives.
Dr. Brochman? Okay, as you all know too, for a while there, we did not have a federal budget, but happy to report that that has been adopted. And there were a couple iffy funding, um, amounts listed on that bill for title funds for school districts. I'm happy to report that for now, Title I-A funds are still intact. For our school district, that's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. The majority of those funds pays for salaries and benefits for our reading specialists at the elementary levels. There's, for, for twenty-five, twenty-six, we still have our Title II and Title IV funding. There is uncertainty moving forward if that is going to remain, or if it does remain, if the uses will remain the same. So currently, our Title II money is used for professional development, for staff, teachers, um, administrators. That, if that, if they change the use of those funds, some of that professional development cost then may fall to the district instead of being funded by the federal money. Title IV funds right now are paying for our AP tests. I don't know if you all know, but AP tests cost about a hundred dollars per student to take one AP test. Our title funds are paying for those tests so that our students do not have to pay for those tests. And then it is paying also for some educational software. Alright, Dr. Brochman. Alright, now to get to where we are currently. For our twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures, and this is through October thirty-first, we budgeted thirty-seven million. We have spent just a little over eleven million, so twenty-nine point eight percent of our budget. I am going to say right now, these numbers are a little skewed just because of where we were with receiving revenues. So I was not paying some of our bills until we had that revenue, namely charter tuition costs. So these, I'm going to tell you these now, but then come January, when our money starts coming in and then I have paid all of those, you're going to see a, a little bit of a different picture. Go ahead. So, as you know, we had, um, purchased some software through Frontline that allows us to do more enhanced financial planning, more enhanced financial comparisons. And this next slide is one of the products of that software. So what you're looking at here is a year-to-year comparison of our expenditures. So the twenty, twenty, twenty-five, FY twenty, twenty-five, that's actually our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then to the right of that, you see our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So as you can see, last year at this time, we had already spent almost thirteen million dollars. But because we were being very conservative and waiting until we had some funding coming in, we are right now at eleven point one. Like I said, that'll change. To the right of that, you can see the year-over-year change. That is telling you where our savings, basically, from one year to the next has been coming from. Salaries and benefits, that is because we did not have to make part of our Piers' benefits payments. That is going to be due next week and that is over a million dollars. So because the, the state wasn't sending us our subsidies, they allowed us to hold off on that payment. So that'll catch up. Purchase services, as you see, being less eight hundred and forty-four thousand, that encompasses the cyber charter cost. So that'll catch up. Dr. Brochman? On the revenue side, we have budgeted thirty-five and a half million. As of October thirty-first, we're at thirteen and a half with the majority of that coming from our real estate tax dollars. We have received thirty-eight percent of our anticipated revenue to date. That is about to change. Here is another one of those side-by-side comparisons. So as you can see, twenty-four, twenty-five, we already have had seventeen point one million dollars. Right now, through twenty-five, twenty-six, we're at thirteen and a half million. So that's a big difference of three and a half million dollars sitting there. And all of that basically is coming from that state subsidies. We are now starting to see in our portal, state subsidies sitting there that are to be deposited to our accounts between now and October thirtieth. So my plan is, or, sorry, November thirtieth, I'm going backwards, November thirtieth. My plan is, once I see those deposits over the next two weeks, I'm going to pay off that seven million dollar loan. We really didn't use any of it. We had to pay some interest and fees on it. The money that we are receiving from the additional revenues is going to basically pay for those interest and fees that we paid on that loan. I have heard that if school districts had taken loans out through the PA Treasury Department, that they would have the interest and fees forgiven on the PA Treasury loans. But no school district that I know even knew they could take out a loan through the PA Treasury Department. Yeah. So there's no talk right now of the state sending us back any of the money that we have paid for these loans.
Yeah. State should have to. Yeah.
Alright, looking ahead. So after December's reorganization meeting, I would like to then start getting a budget committee in place so that we can start looking at projections for twenty-six, twenty-five. I will provide some estimated expenditures for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. I'll provide some revenue analysis for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. What is nice about this new software that I have is we can play different scenarios out. And one of the, um, handouts that I gave you, the board members, is just a little bit more detailed information of our year-over-year in our revenues and expenditures. So you can see that broken out. Um, in January, I will also start working with the building principals to look at their building budgets for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, that's all I have in my next slide after the questions.
Um, who's gotten the final numbers on last year's budget yet? I know that it's typically this way, but.
They are currently working on it. I actually talked with the auditor today and she said probably in early December, she'll have a final analysis for us.
Okay.
She won't, she told me, she probably won't do the official audit and have it signed until the new year, but she'll have our numbers. It does look positive though, so that's good.
And then, um, when you say you'd like to have a budget committee in place, are you talking a budget committee made up of board members?
Yes, made up of board members.
So then, um, those meetings would, are you, how, how often are you thinking they're going to need?
I would say if we can do an, an early meeting in January, we may be able to do one a month. Um, because I will also be meeting with the building principals and supervisors on their particular budgets. So I would say one a month.
The reason I ask, and Dr. Oberk, um, can you speak to this as well, but, um, what we did last year with our very first committee that we have, Policy Committee, was we had voted and approved the schedule of meetings for that policy committee at the same time that we did the board meeting so that we didn't have to pay extra for the advertising.
Oh, yeah, that would be.
So if we were doing the same thing, maybe we could consider, so that they're all done at the same time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because these are going to have to be public meetings.
Yes, and I plan on starting those in January, just like after the reorg meeting, to get, uh, committee in place from the board. Yeah, board members, anyway.
Just to save this money where we can?
Yes.
Because advertising is.
It's on teeth, yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate that. Appreciate the update. Yep. And Ms. President, that's all I have for the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Oberk, and thanks to everybody that presented. It is now seven oh five. Let's reconvene at seven ten.
Now, seven eleven, and going to call to order the McGuffey School Board, regular School Board meeting. Roll call, please.
Rod.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
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 Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Anad.
Yes.
Would now, uh, like to welcome to the podium Pastor Linda, who's going to lead us in a word of prayer. She's from East Buffalo. She's from East Buffalo Presbyterian Church.
We pray with thee. God, we come together this evening with many tasks of the day still on our hearts and minds, but we pray now that you might transition us in our thinking and choices to this time and place. Remind each person around this circle here what a privilege it is to be able to make policy and procedures that affect our children. So as we come together tonight, we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your guidance. In this season of Thanksgiving, we would pray that we truly might learn to be people that are very thankful, and may our Thanksgiving turn into thanks living. We offer this prayer, Lord, in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. May we walk, rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to make an announcement, um, that we held an executive session today at 5:00 to discuss personnel. Couple other announcements before we get to the public participation. A, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Schingle.
Happy birthday.
Um, and, Mr. Laeger, you have an announcement as well?
I'd just like to make a announcement. We had some very nice Veterans Day ceremonies. I attended Joe Walker in Claysville. Um, one thing that I would just like to let everybody be aware of, we had a fellow at the Claysville that was a World War II veteran. He was 99 years old, as sharp as a tack. They say that he'll be 100 years old the day after Christmas. And his name was Mr. Hamilton. So it was just a pleasure to meet Mr. Hamilton as a World War II veteran, and thanks to all our veterans who served.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laeger. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. Chief?
Mr. President, I call Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
It's going to be short and sweet. Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. He beat me to the happy birthday, but happy birthday, Mrs. Schingle. Um, I just want to touch on the high school club slash fundraisers real quick. Um, I personally got some... I've never stood here in opposition of any fundraiser or grant, and to my recollection, I don't think any of the board ever has either. So I just want to say that, um, had that information been included on the agenda last month, none of this situation would have happened. I also want to say, when I stood before you last month, I was very clear in my question. Due to the lack of information, what are you guys being asked to vote on? Are you being asked to vote on clubs? Are you being asked to vote on the fundraisers? The clubs have always been my issue, as you all know. I think parental consent should be required, but fundraising, never. So if anybody at any point had clarified that that agenda item was just about fundraising, I don't know if you could have passed it or not due to the lack of information. Um, but I just wanted to make it clear to the public that I've never stood in opposition of any fundraising or donations, and I know the board got some blame, too, and you guys haven't either, to my knowledge. So all I want to ask is that, moving forward, we do better with the information sharing and that the agenda looks the way it should. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Chief?
Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2025 School Board meeting as submitted.
No move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from October 17th, 2025 to November 20th, 2025, check number 81444 through check number 81578, in the amount of $940,361 as submitted.
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated October 20th, 2025, check number 7817 through check number 7826, in the amount of $161,592.3 cents as submitted. No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of October 2025 as submitted. No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the affiliation agreement between West Virginia University and McGuffey School District relating to the placement of pre-service and/or student teachers in the school system. The effective date shall be January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2030. No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the request from West Virginia University to have a student teacher with the McGuffey School District, January 26, 2026 through March 13th, 2026, pending receipt of all required clearances. No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the request from Penn West University to have a student teacher with McGuffey School District, January 21st, 2026 through May 1st, 2026, pending receipt of all required clearances. No move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to accept a $2,000 donation from an anonymous donor to pay for warm-up jackets for the Bocchi team, per the terms of the McGuffey School District Policy 702, gifts, grants, and donations.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And a thank you to that donor. Yes, thank you.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the request for Mr. Justin Wise to begin a crocheting club in a middle school to be run once a month during high leaning period. There would be no cost to the district.
No move.
Second. Discussion?
Um, is Mr. Wise teaching that? I was kind of kidding.
There are men who crochet.
Yeah, I do myself personally.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Pennsylvania State Police and McGuffey School District as presented. No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have...
Go ahead, Ms. Fry.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, I just have two questions. Um, and within the MOU on page four and five, where it talks about Section 912, does that clause address? I've had people ask me about, we're a hunting community, we're a farming community, kids with pocket knives. They come to school, they forget they have it in their pocket, they let somebody know. Does that clause allow for that leniency of lawful purpose of having it on you, if that makes sense?
It hasn't in the past.
No, I'm asking the question if that MOU allows...
I'm just saying it hasn't in the past. I know students who have...
Yeah, I'm going to look at the MOU, but as for pocket knives, so, um, there is a Boy Scout exception in the law, um, for a pocket knife lighter two and a half inches. Um, but this student is generally, and I can't speak to this district, but in general, my knowledge of working with districts, students are so disciplined for the pocket knife of less than two and a half inches, um, but it's not as severe as if it was over two and a half inches, that would consider to be as a weapon. Um, so, of course, box cutters don't have to be two and a half inches, you know, it's just the old Boy Scout exception for pocket knives. Um, so if it is over two and a half inches, generally, it could lead to expulsion that is up to the district. I'm not sure how this district handled the students that come forward saying, I left this in my hair, many of my district handled that differently, so...
So does this allow for it, I guess, I think that's where I'm getting, is, does this clause allow for it not to be mandatory to report to the police? I think that's where the...
No, so, that's a really good question, actually. Um, in this case, specifically what you're speaking to, uh, it is left to your building principals.
Okay.
To make that determination, and if it rises to another level, that may be where we bring in the McGuffey School Police, but that doesn't supersede, first and foremost, your building principals.
Do they make the first call what, this MOU is not saying, you found a student with a knife, you have to let us know?
No.
Okay.
And Chief, Chief, I want you to step in, because, no, I know, I'm not saying it's not notified, and in fact, Act 44 just came out that not only do we notify where the weapon was placed, uh, in that building, but actually the entire district. So that's something that just came about, but in the past, if there was a weapon, we would notify.
Okay.
But I think you're asking the question of who handles it, first and foremost.
Yes and no. It's, I think it's kind of a little bit of both. Um, it freaks parents out that, like I said, we live in a community where, I mean, kid's so little. I mean, you know, in all honesty, and so I think it freaks parents out to think that if their child forgets it in their pocket and it becomes known to the district, that they're going to be reported to the police for that, whether it's a minor or a major case of whatever. So I guess I was just curious, if, you know...
Chief, go.
Thank you, Doc. That refers to our department referring it to PSP, Pennsylvania State Police. That, that's not the reporting purposes for principals reporting the students bringing it, okay? That's what this MOU is. It is clearly for our, our district to get services from the Pennsylvania State Police.
So it's just a statistical thing, this was an incident that was found, it's not this kid brought this knife here?
Right, again, that's not reported to the state police. It's reported to the state police by them getting a copy of our Safe School Report, but it is not mandatory for us to say we have X number of knives collected or confiscated.
Okay.
Okay.
So when the student is found then, and they're brought to the office, for instance, the state police aren't called and said, this is what we found?
That's correct.
Okay.
We handle through building principals, and the building principals refer to us if, if prosecutions are required.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
This reference to 912 is the Crimes Code definition of weapon, which does have that Boy Scout exception in it.
Okay, I missed that part, so thank you. Um, my last question is, if, if this can be amended, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, the MOU, okay, if the MOU is required by PA Code, why is there a clause that allows amendment? Is it just a general clause because it's an MOU that allows for changes that maybe it can even be, the word's slipping my mind, but like specific to McGuffey, like add specifics for our district? Or is it just for the law changes, now we have to update this MOU, and it's just a general reference to the public that this is subject to change if there's changes that need made? I guess is my... And then it would have to come back to the board for approval, correct?
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you, that, that was it, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have one for Chief, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Laeger.
Do we have an MOU with our local Donegal or South Franklin or Moore's Township, please?
We have with Donegal.
Donegal?
Yes, sir. It's added in the same MOU.
Okay. And how about the South Franklin Moore's?
We do not have an MOU with South Franklin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Renat, I didn't hear that.
We need one for there as well, because the statute specifically states you have to have an MOU with the local law enforcement where there's any school district property.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't say buildings, so, for example, the districts I worked in, if we had a baseball field, we'd have to have an MOU in that jurisdiction.
With those offices?
Joe Walker is in South Franklin, so we'd have to have one with the South Franklin Police Department. Apparently, South Franklin contracts out the same as Moore's.
Yeah.
And I believe Canton Township, that's different.
Canton, yep.
So many hours for so much, but, right.
But, um, Dr. Ober and I will talk to this and present that, our findings to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote?
Do, with that being said, if there's a need for additional, do we pass this now and come back to it with...
Well, this is the main point. It was near to the...
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, well, I know you said it was included, that the Donegal was included in.
Yes, it was.
So this is state and local? Right, that's what I thought, so...
We'll need one for South Franklin next time.
Uh, so, this is something that we do every two years.
Yes.
Chief, is there, is there a time limit on...
There is, I'd ask if we can, we can approve this one tonight, and we'll make an additional one with just, uh, with just the Green Regional.
We'll look into that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the application for homebound instruction for student A, grade 11, for medical reasons.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the list of high school club and activity fundraisers for the 25-26 school year, retroactive to October 16th, 2025.
No move.
Bless you.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to declare the below list of textbooks, along with any supplemental or related resources associated with the attached list, as unused and unnecessary, and authorize disposal of the items as per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Policy 706.1, disposal of obsolete outdated equipment.
No move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve directory information to be added to all four student handbooks, high school, middle school, Claysville Elementary School, and Joe Walker Elementary School.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to hire Jessica Hickman as a speech and language pathologist at Master Step Eight, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act 168 verification.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Hickman.
Good evening, Dr. Ober, Mr. Kern, Mr. Thomas, members of the board, esteemed colleagues, and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Jessica Hickman, our new speech-language pathologist. Mrs. Hickman is a community member and was served as a substitute teacher in our district since 2016. Prior to serving as a substitute here, she was a speech-language pathologist for 17 years in Texas, New York, Virginia, and Warren, Pennsylvania, in the northeastern part of the state. She received her Radford degree in Communication Science and Disorders from Penn State University, and her master's degree from Radford University in Virginia in the same field of study. Jessica began the school year... Jessica began the school year as an extended day-to-day substitute for the position in which she was just approved. She has done a fabulous job of teaching, leading meetings, leading IT meetings, and working with our stakeholders to support our students. Please join me in welcoming her. Just like to say, say thank you for the opportunity. I have been a part of this community for thirteen years. And so we, I am grateful to step in from mom to, I guess, to substitute and to being a full-time employee. But the kids are great, the staff is great, and I have a huge opportunity. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. Need a motion to appoint Mark Bonus, current secondary principal, as interim athletic director for the McGuffey School District, retroactive to October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, with a per diem stipend of fifty dollars a day.
No move, second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mrs. Chelsea Mahoney as a substitute teacher for educator secretary, food service employee, retroactive to November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
No move. Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Shannon McMaster as an emergency day-to-day substitute teacher and paraeducator for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, pending receipt of all clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move, second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Bonnie Cowden, Cody Fuller, and William Mitchell as drivers for G G and C for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
No move, second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Daniel Goodrow as a driver for first student for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
No move, second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying, Mr. Kern, motion carries. No, we did, did it, correct?
Yeah.
No. Need a motion to approve Renee Cambruzy and John Lazier to attend and chaperone members of the McGuffey FFA to the Pennsylvania Farm Show on January twelfth through thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
No move, second?
Discussion?
Request a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Thomas.
So the cost of the district there, if it's not included in their, like, department budget, from what line item of our budget does it come?
The only thing that we're going to pay for are the substitute teachers that have to fill in for them when they're on. They have their own student activity FFA account, so this trip will be paid through their student activity fund.
So the substitute teachers, that includes the student activity fund also?
No.
That was out of the general fund.
No, no.
Just the general fund. Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kern.
Ms. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lazier?
The same.
Mr. Varnett?
Yes.
Ms. Jingle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Banada?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes. Motion carries, eight zero one. Need a motion to approve the purchase of a Camus High-Efficiency Boiler to replace the one remaining existing twenty-year-old Camus Boiler for Joe Walker Elementary School in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents from Sebel Equipment Fund to be made available from the capital improvement funds.
No move, second?
Discussion?
I would just like to thank our maintenance crew for installing this. This is not an easy task, and these are very, very efficient boilers nowadays. They really save an awful lot of money there. Smart technology really reduced our costs for energy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to adopt resolution providing for the appointment of Ms. Charlene Harborchok in deputized Keystone Collections Group to collect real estate taxes for the McGuffey School District for properties located in Blaine Township as authorized by twenty-four PS six oh one of the Pennsylvania Public School Code until the next election.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Staying, I will stay. Motion carries, seven one one. Yeah, motion carries, seven one one. Need a motion to approve the revisions to Resolutions twenty-five, twenty-six, number two through number nine to reflect the compensation for South Franklin Township, Green Hills Borough, Buffalo Township, Donegal Township, East Finley Township, West Finley Township, Morris Township, and Cleveland Borough, elected tax collectors in the McGuffey School District as submitted.
No move, second?
Discussion?
I just have a question, I know it's, the rate, because they're, they were kind of fluctuating everywhere. The determination is based on the assessed value of the properties in that township, correct? Okay. That was it, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer LLC for two invoices dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five in a total amount of four thousand, fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents as submitted.
No move.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Staying, motion carries, seven two.
I know.
First reading.
All right, we have a first reading policy for travel reimbursements, federal programs. There for your review. Facilities use report, Doc?
President, we had four uses in October, PTO meetings in Joe Walker and Quayside, and then also PTO hosted truck or treat at both Joe Walker and Quayside.
Thank you, Dr. Over. The budget expenditure report for the month of October twenty-five is presented for your review. Cafeteria reports for the month of October twenty twenty-five are presented through your review. The P card spending report for the month of twenty twenty-five is presented for your review. Do we have a solicitor's report, Adam?
We do note this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a Western Area Current Technology update, Ms. Fry?
Yes, I have all the attachments on there for public view. I hope you have had time to review them. Our student of the month was Mitchell Fowler in the welding from Trinity School District. He had quite a crew with him, his entire family, plus a little newborn. We just said she was six weeks old, she was a cute little thing. But anyways, it was really nice to see the family support that he had with him. It was great, but he's doing great with the school, he's excelling. So really good to see that. Other than that, all of the attachments are there for your view, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fry.
Thank you.
Pennsylvania School Board Association report, Ms. Birthday Girl, Ms. Jingle?
Thank you. Couple of things, January seventeenth, from nine to eleven thirty, they start the interactive Board Officers Workshop. So we're invited to that, and I don't know that anybody would be interested in doing, no, tomorrow, November twenty-first, at twelve PM, but it's on social media and school boards. You still can get in if you decide. And then there's a webinar coming up, and I think this one sounds really interesting. It's December the fifth, and it is at twelve noon. It's on how Congress is handling and shaping school law for this year. A reminder that they have the required information, a test that we all have to do with certifications as board members. And we do all need to do them. So they're all on, and everything I'm telling you here is on, in the book that we get, in the bulletin, or on their websites, it's not that I'm telling you anything any different. It's the same information, I even wonder if I should be reading it when you get the book. But I'm just reminding you, there's a few things there that I think we should really look at. You know, it'd be nice to be in the workshop when we could talk about AI and all those things. And they offer those little quick ones for ten minutes, so that's something to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jingle. Policy Committee Report, Ms. Jackson?
So the October minutes are there for your review. I actually had to miss the November meeting due to a family emergency, but Policy six two six point one came out of that for the first reading. And just to keep in mind, the way that works, first reading this month, and then at the next meeting would be, although, are we doing those in December? Is this an early meeting, or are we holding it till January? I would suggest we hold it till January.
I would have to look at the calendar, because we may have already advertised. I don't know if all, yeah, we may have. We'll look.
Yeah, I just, because typically we give the public like thirty days to review, and the board, thirty days to review. And because the reorganizational meeting is much quicker than two weeks, maybe we should consider extending that out, I don't know how soon you need that policy passed. So if we held it till January, and for the second, which would be when we would vote on it. And then that would give everybody time to review it, if you have any questions or concerns to reach out. Does that work, okay?
Yep.
And then we're still working, of course, on the AI. So the next meeting is actually in December. It is December ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
And what, what policy is that finished?
I'm sorry?
What, what policy are you continuing to work on there?
We're working on, it's eight fifteen point one, it's the AI, artificial intelligence policy, acceptable use and govern, and then, kind of with that, we had done, we had completed eight fifteen, which is your general accepted use policy for technology in general. But we decided to pull it from the, from the agenda and hold on to it in case there were any changes that we needed to make as we reviewed both of them, because eight fifteen point one obviously relates to eight fifteen. So we'll probably, we'll put them both on when they get, when we get done with them.
And then what, what did you have lined up next?
I can't remember what's on the bottom of the rolling agenda. Is it on the minutes? I don't remember. But we had determined.
Policy oh oh four.
Still in conversation, we talked about it. The attendance? Yeah. Anyway, we have a rolling agenda, and I've said several times, if anybody has anything to bring it to, then we can add it to the rolling agenda. And then we do give consideration, if there's something the administration needs in a more timely matter, then we will kind of bump it up, hence Policy six two six point one. They need that, so we kind of bumped it ahead, because they need it within a specific timeline. But anything that anybody wants reviewed, just let us know, and we'll add it to the, what we have to do is add it to the agenda, and it kind of rolls as we get done, connect and roll up.
Could you put zero in for review?
Yeah. Sure. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. At this time, we will take public comment on non-agenda and agenda items. Chief? Ms. President, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Thank you, Chief.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I just want to start out by saying, I think huge improvements were made on the agenda for this month. And of course, I'm never satisfied, so. I'm going to request that when you print the agendas for the public that's in attendance, that you also print out the attachments that you are now putting on the agenda. And with that said, I wanted to say, seeing how this month's agenda was presented to the public is a huge difference from how it's been done for several years now. And it really makes me wonder how many things that should have been on there for public review haven't been. And I personally find that disturbing. I know I've been bringing it up for a few years now that we need more information. We have a right for more information. So I hope that continues. I hope you continue that. And with, and with that said, I'd like to say that when you elect your next board president at next month's meeting, you should really think long and hard about who it is. It needs to be somebody who's willing to make sure that that agenda is being presented to the public as it should be, that the attachments are there that should be. And it's a very important role for whoever sits in that seat. I've seen many people sit there, and once they have that position, they change who they are or were as board members. And I'd really like to see whoever takes that seat next not do that. I want the, not the power to go to your head, but to remain not just as a guardian of the district, but as a guardian of the students and the community, and staff, of course. So thinking long and hard about who you're going to put in that role next. It's an important role to me, who you, who you put there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chief? Ms. President, Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, everyone, Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township. I want to start off with something about the attendance situation. A student being late to school because of a bus wreck, or the bus being late to pick them up, should not be counted as late due to it not being any fault of their own. I have a student that is, that has it set in their head that they are going to have perfect attendance this year. So, now if they've got fever, staying home. I know they're not going to want to listen to me, but anyways, both of those instances that I had mentioned previously happened this year so far, and it caused them to not get recognized for perfect attendance. And they missed out on the reward that they were given. Only when I brought it up to the school's attention, it was handled and she was recognized. I would recommend that this be something that is fixed in the future if you want to keep the positive spirits up for those students that strive to make perfect attendance. This situation would have gone unnoticed if it weren't for us catching it. So please be mindful of the positivity and, or of the possibility, and fix it for the future. I did speak to Ms. Painter, and we got the situation handled. But I think that this is something that can very easily be missed, like I said. Now, her, her absence, her being late, like I said, was due to an accident, and the bus was over an hour late. So that was no fault of her own, and therefore, I believe that she still should have been able to participate in the reward that she was, that all the children were given. And she missed out on that, unfortunately. Excuse me. For future reference, I would like to remind you all that you all work for us. Now, I do appreciate the work that you do, and the fact that you're here and all the years that you have been here and dedicated your time to the school and to the students. years that you have been here and dedicated your time to the school and to the students. Um, I am no fan of this AI stuff whatsoever. Uh, we don't have to play keep up, keeping up with the Joneses on this. I think it's dangerous for the children. Um, I'm a mother that my children don't have phones in their faces very much at all. I wait until later on in life to get them a device. My daughter's 11. She's probably the only one in sixth grade without a phone. She tells me it all the time, why can't I have one? Um, the only one in sixth grade without one. I have noticed the difference waiting with my daughter Annabelle and, uh, my son got one early, but that was a situation out of my hands. Um, but I have noticed that the two older children waiting a little bit longer, actually they're not attached to their phones as much. We are all guilty of it, myself for sure, but, um, I've noticed that like they're not running to that phone to check their messages and, and, and always on their phone. So I think that's a positive thing to wait longer for these kids to have some kind of device in their hands. Um, real quick, I wanted to point out a couple positives. The first, as far as I can see, there's no resignations this month. Um, so that's a positive. I don't know if anyone else thought of that, but, um, the Veterans Day ceremony was absolutely wonderful. The children and staff did an amazing job and I would like to thank everyone involved and to especially thank Mr. Leisure for being the one to start this, these programs off again and caring enough to make it happen. So thank you, Mr. Leisure. Um, your speech at the ceremony was very nice and your recognition of the man who is 99 was wonderful. Um, and just the fact that nobody was doing anything for I'm not sure how many years, that's kind of disheartening. We live in the United States of America. We don't live in a Russia that are, you know, um, putting our veterans at the spotlight. We are in the United States and that's something that should not have happened. So I, I did not know that until you said that, that day, and I greatly appreciate that because I come from a family of many veterans. Um, my grandfather, World War II, um, veteran, so greatly appreciate that. So thank you so much. Um, Mr. Vandetta and Mr. Kern, I wish you the best. Happy birthday, Baetti. And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Chief, this president concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm sorry, items for discussion from the board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Ms. Schreiber.
First, I want to say, going into this journey of being on the board, you don't know what you're getting into, especially if you're new to it. I wasn't new to attending meetings. I wasn't new to staying late. I wasn't new to a lot of the drama that goes on with it, but I was new to behind the scenes and, and how everybody worked together. And I just want to say that I'm thankful that I didn't put blinders on to see people for who they are and what they are. And I just want to say I've learned a lot from you, Mr. Kern, and I've learned a lot from you, Mr. Vandetta, and I thank you for sharing your experiences and your expertise in different situations as we have worked together on this board. And I think you'll be missed, even if it's a little bit, but I'll miss you a lot. So thank you.
Any other items for discussion?
There was one more. Um, on, on the agenda, um, as you saw, was the student handbook update, um, that I had requested. I first want to say thank you to our administration and to Dr. Oberg for addressing the situation, um, head on whenever it, it arose. Um, many parents, I don't know if it just went out to elementary students or if it went out to everybody, but there was an email that went out updating us about an updated, um, media release form that included the date of birth. And now parents can be more aware that that is happening, um, and it gives them the option to opt out. Um, my question, maybe this is, maybe this is for Mrs. Heaton Hall. Um, with regards to FERPA, what information is allowed to be shared without parental consent versus what information is allowed to be shared with parental consent? I know there are certain things that can be without parental consent. I guess I'm just not as versed on it as I'd like to be. And I just want to make sure that I understand it completely. It sounds to me like the way that the, the new form was created was if you wanted to opt out to submit it in. I was going to say I have a copy of it as well. Um, but my only question is, do we need to, is it okay the way that it is? Um, the notice that went out was asking parents if we wanted to update the form to submit a new one or to submit it in writing. But since this is adding the date of birth to it, does the school district have to have brand new ones that are granting permission for that date of birth to be updated? Like, is it optional basically at this point? Do the old forms cover the changes?
So, Dr. Oberg and I had discussions about the issue.
Sure.
And, and we talked over about what the form was a book that I did not read off, but ultimately I did not review the final form.
Okay.
So I don't know that I can answer your question of a comparison.
Sure.
I think, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, so what we took was the language from FERPA. Um, and that actually would be used also to be included to use and their information on each day. And I'm going to review it.
Sure.
Um, our other family education rights, our, our schools may identify certain types of information that's direct information. And this type of information is generally not considered harmful or invasion process if shared and it may be related to parental consent unless, so it's your point, a parent guardian asks to opt out.
Okay.
So that is why we always purpose to do anything that we do. But we every year in, in the, moving forward, we're going to do a year.
Right.
So that's one of the things we talked about.
Yeah.
So that form sent out, because again, right now, we're only sharing birthdays.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
And this, this information is also on our website.
Yes. That's awesome. That's, that's, I just want a clarification on that because I was misunderstanding or not understanding completely or something, something just wasn't clicking for me. So I appreciate that. But, um, I do, I do want to thank our administration and you, Dr. Oberg. Like I said, you guys, you addressed it as soon as there was a concern it was being addressed. The student handbook, just to clarify to the board and to the public, what I found when I was trying to find what directory information the district, um, was picking to be considered directory information, because that's, that's what means if FERPA allows is the district can say, this is what we're going to consider to be, um, directory information. I couldn't find it for a regular ed student. It was only listed under our special education. And so I was very confused as to why that was happening and where is it going to be for spec, for regular education students? Why would it only be listed there? So I brought the concern and, um, Dr. O, Dr. Oberg and I talked about it and I explained to him what I would like to see, which would be a blurb added or even the same verb is that's in there under special education, but with the regular education or just a general, this is what directory information is from McGuffey in the student handbook. So that when we're giving those out every year and parents are signing off on them, whether y'all read them or not, I don't know. I read them every single year and I sign it. And I even read things off to both of my children, elementary and high school, to make sure they understand it as well. Um, but it was just for me, it was more clarification for the public, for the community to understand what this is and why we're doing it. And so I just want to say thank you for working with me on that and for addressing this and thank you to the board for approving that for this update.
So is the directory information listed or not?
So currently it is listed on our website under the parent tab, under, uh, forums and other, other releases. And actually before we even put on that parent forum, it has certain sections right there. So very detailed about what directory information is, is it, and then we really have parents on top. What we're going to do next is on each person's handbook, I have that, that type of information, that exact type of information placed there as well. So that way parents will be able to understand what their information is.
So it, it includes them, where is it listed at? Does it list it for each student? But so whatever you said, it, it leaves out there what directory information is. So whatever it is, you, you have to memorize on the top of your head, you know, the directory information?
So it would give students first name, last name, uh, what I actually have right here, the images, video, voice. Um, it could include birthdays, it could include participating in official recognized activities and sports. It could be a listing of weight and height of numbers of, of athletic teams. And also it could often do this especially in high school, but we did hear, um, any kind of monitors, awards, um, championships where students are involved, that, you know, that's pretty much what it is. What information is not directory information is student's address, phone number, email address. Uh, what is not is student ID numbers. What is not is a full date of birth. And then of course, they're ever share academic, we're considering, but it's not directory.
It's kind of the same thing that the newspaper puts out when they win a game and this guy was the men, heroes. What they put out, they don't put their address. They don't put, but they do put, if their structure, their building, their athletic training. That's kind of the same type of information from what you're saying.
I like to call it HIPAA for students because it's basically HIPAA is your medical field stuff. That I'm well versed on because of my, what I do. But FERPA is like personal information that's protected for students essentially. So it's HIPAA for school is what I call it. It's just an easy way for me to understand it if you understand HIPAA. So, thanks.
So it's not actually a directory?
No, no, no. No, 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 no. It is just saying, this is the information we can share publicly with your consent. And the, the media release form is what Dr. Oberg is saying. They're, they're going to make sure they collect annually. Because that was one of the things I was concerned about, you know, the, the form used to say that this was valid for the lifetime of the student, um, career at McGuffey essentially. And I said, well, you ask for us to sign our lives away every single year. I think the district should have, you know, they should have to require this every, my views have changed about technology very much in the last two, three years, more so for my kids than for myself. But I don't, I, myself even stopped sharing photos and videos and things like that of my kids online just because of, it's dangerous, guys. Like, it's crazy how bad it's getting. So that's
Considering the things you shared even five years ago, they're still out there.
Exact, that's what I mean. They, you never get rid of them. Somebody has screenshot them.
But I just want to be clear because I think that you just missed spoken a little bit. Um, what the form says is that this is the directory information that, that the district can share unless the parent signs they off against it, correct? So not that, because you just said, um, that we would use this as directory information if the parent agrees, but that's not the same thing.
No, you're right. You're right.
I just want to make sure that it's clear. So where the form says, this is the kind of information that is directory information, the district considers directory information, that we will use as such unless the parent opt out. Is that correct?
No. Opt out, okay. So I apologize.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we are clear.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, the other thing, since we're on that subject, also on the website, I'm on there right now, there is a military denial of information. And I just learned that this week through Dr. Oberg that, um, a military recruiter or higher education institutions can request name, address, and phone number from students. So if parents are not aware of that and they don't want that information released, they need to sign the denial form.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Any other items for discussion? I'm sorry.
I make a motion to advertise to accept, um, RFPs for a new solicitor.
So we have a motion on the floor for RFPs for a new solicitor and we have a second?
Doesn't have to be.
So
Didn't have to be on the agenda when we had another school board member who made a motion to bring one in. Past president. No, he didn't. Well, it's illegal now, it should have been illegal then, which means that whole process was illegal and the solicitor we have sitting is in table is in place.
Do we have the minutes from that, Ms. Abert? It ended up getting tabled, but it not? It has been.
Yeah, it was tabled and then we voted on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, Ms. Abert, I'm sorry, you said it was, so let's just look at the minutes and see what it says. Cause I, my mind goes back and forth. I can't remember. I thought it was originally asked for that, but I think at the time we said it had to go on the next meeting.
Mm-hmm. Right, remember that. That's what happened.
Well, can we put it on? It's, it's going to come up for, um, every organization. They're always asked, are we going to retain that person?
Right. Correct.
So then I asked that if you put on the agenda for December.
Okay. So your motion would be? I thought so too.
Hiring a solicitor is part of the reorganizational process.
I think what Ms. Jackson's asking for is to open up publicly RFPs. So, I mean, that can be added to next month's agenda if you guys approve that tonight. Um, sure, but I
Everybody's been discussing, so.
Wait for motion in a second.
Yeah.
Well, the, the original motion, we can't do. So you would need a new motion to add it to next month's agenda.
I make a motion to add it to next month's agenda.
Okay. Ms. Schingle made a motion to add this?
I second.
Okay. Now discussion, I, I'd like to, wait, can we see that? Yes, go ahead, Mr.
No, we're just, well, I, I've heard
We had to ask the board
Something, as far as, yes, this, this thing.
You can just, you can talk about this going to be positioned comfortably.
But is it available for executive session?
Well, I, I would, I was going to say, I would say yes, if there's specifics that you're, you know, that could lead to leaking information that is executive, if that makes We had a special meeting, which is when it was asked to be on the next meeting. No, because if I remember correctly, we had to postpone the March meeting. There's not really two. March 20th doesn't have minutes because we postponed it because it's a solicitor's situation, I believe. I just remember it was like a couple days apart. I remember that, but I don't remember when, when you mentioned two March dates, I figured Yeah, it was motioned May 13th to add the May 15th meeting.
Yeah, to add it on to Yeah, to add it on to May 15th.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second to add it to next month's?
That is correct. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask for a roll call, Ms. Iver. So we are voting yes to request RF... Or to add it to the agenda next meeting?
To, yes.
To add it to the agenda next meeting. Not to request RFPs, but to add a motion, or add...
To add to the agenda a motion...
For you guys at night to vote, and you ladies at night to vote on if you want to open up an RFP. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In the reorganizational meeting, we have to vote on a new solicitor.
We do not have to.
Yeah, we do. It's in the reorganizational process every year. It's part of the reorganizational meeting.
But one of the things that we found was that we technically don't have to have a solicitor either, correct? Throughout this whole process legally. Good idea, no, but legally.
These meetings... Reorganization. Yeah, we do. We appoint a solicitor. But appointing the solicitor and opening up RFPs can be two separate things.
It's two different things, yeah.
Yeah. So if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote on to add that to the agenda next meeting, Ms. Iver.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langer?
No.
Mr. Varnik?
No.
Ms. Shingle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Vanetta?
No.
Ms. Frye?
No.
Mr. Kern?
Is it four-four right now? For my last vote, thank you. I am going to say yes for the simple fact, let the new board decide. Yep, so yes. You're welcome.
Need a motion for a turn in the meeting?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can never remember where this turn off is.